Like to call the meeting to order if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of the public's business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our active activities so that they, our efforts may honor you. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Okay. Before we begin, we have a couple changes to the original agenda. Item three E has been added. Item ten A has been added. And we have one other thing to add at this point, which is twelve B on the calendar. Set up to schedule the public hearing for rezoning thirteen dash oh two, SUP thirteen dash oh four for storage facility down on Route twenty. Are there any other changes?
Yes. I'd like to move item three E to the action items. That's a pretty significant event that occurred and I think that ought to be a specific recommendation, maybe even some comments about it.
Okay. So we'll move that then from three E to four F.
Four or seven?
Seven.
Excuse me, the next number, yep, seven C. Give me a minute. Okay. Any other changes? In that case, I'll look for a motion to approve this modified.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll turn that way from now on.
Alright. Then for the consent agenda, could I get an approval on that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero on that too. Okay, next we have public appearances and first is Employee of the Month.
Chairman, our March Employee of the Month joined the Orange County team just over five years ago and was nominated by her peers. This employee constantly displays the definition of exceptional customer service. Her interaction with coworkers, citizens, and especially new employees is a model that every employee should strive to demonstrate. She is always seen with a smile on her face, a pleasant voice, and has an everlasting willingness to assist anyone at any time. She exemplifies a positive image at all times which makes her stand out as an Orange County employee. This employee takes exceptional pride in her work and delivers prompt and professional results. She strives to create a positive environment for county staff and is instrumental in keeping departments updated on changes to human resources policies and procedures. It's with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to you our Employee of the Month, Mrs. Karen Gibson.
Yay! It's a good thing you look so cute today, doodlebug.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have the Service Awards. Attending today is Diana Wheeler, our Commonwealth Attorney with ten years. And then also receiving Service Awards but were unable to join us today is Tammy Corbin, ten years as Administrative Assistant to the Commonwealth Attorney. And then Jeff Lloyd, ten years as the Orange County Sheriff's Office Deputy Court Security. And Evan Snyder, ten years as firefighter medic.
That's not her fault.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have our Life Saving Awards for the first quarter. Orange County values our public safety team and their acts of heroism, courage, and fearlessness and wants to show appreciation for all of these efforts, but especially to those who save a life. On December twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen, the Department of Fire and EMS in the Lake of the Woods volunteer fire and rescue received a call for a cardiac arrest at the 711 on Route three. While employees of the E-911 Center gave pre-arrival instructions to the caller, fire and EMS crews responded to the address. Members of the Lake of the Woods Fire and Rescue arrived and began treatment of the patient. They were followed shortly by staff from the Orange County Department of Fire and EMS who began advanced cardiac life support treatment. All staff present provided the necessary treatment that allowed the patient to be resuscitated and ultimately discharged from the hospital. It's with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to you the first quarter 2014 Life Saving Award recipients. With the Orange County Department of Fire and EMS, firefighter medic Noah Madden. With the Lake of the Woods Rescue, Chief Jack Kelly. Driver Richard Gullikson. And EMTB Chris Wagner. With the Orange County E-911 Center, Communications Officer Andy French. Communications Officer Lauren Brackelwicky. And not in attendance but also receiving the award is Lieutenant Roger Wilson.
At least a couple of these people are making it a habit to come up here.
And we greatly appreciate that. I know, for real. Teal, you're important too.
That's all down here.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. And that brings us up to the Business Spotlight with Lori Sale from Evergreen Electric. Long time no see. Least fifteen minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Sale and I own, along with my husband Thad Sale, Evergreen Electric LLC. I want to thank Chairman Goodwin and all of the other supervisors. Supervisor Abs, Posier, White, Mr. Frame, Hi-Lee. And Interim County Administrator Brian Davis. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And I would be remiss in my duties if I did not thank Mr. Tim Embry, who seated in the back, for referring our company to have this honor in the Business Spotlight. So thank you, Mr. Embry. I appreciate it. I'd like to start out by saying that we are so excited to be doing business in Orange County. My husband and I moved here back in 2006 from Northern Virginia. And we have just been, we have felt like we've had the most wonderful opportunities here to do business in this county. And it's because of the people of the great county that we are doing as well as we're doing. Also, on a really exciting note, we are celebrating our fifth year of business. That happened last month, so we're very excited about that because it's kind of a milestone to get to your fifth year in business, as you all know. But real quickly, a little background about our company. My husband, again, his name is Thad Sale. We founded the company back in 2009. It's a family-owned and operated company, meaning himself and I own the company. We offer residential and commercial services as well as emergency power and eco-friendly solutions to our customers here in the Orange County areas and surrounding. We like to offer and promote money-saving options for our clients as, you know, the economy's been rough and tough and going eco sometimes helps save money. And that can be just as small as changing out your light bulbs to eco-friendly light bulbs. Evergreen Electric is a fully licensed and insured company. And just real quickly, the services that we offer, everything residential and commercial, and that can be as small as doing a ceiling fan, all the way up to commercial build-outs. We do it all. We, our slogan is "No job is too small. We do it all." We do smart home technology. We are also certified Generac specialists and dealers. So if you need generator, emergency power, please give us a call. We do troubleshooting. My husband is an excellent master electrician and has been for many years. He's brilliant at what he does and that's why we maintain an A grade on Angie's List and have been the recipient of the Super Service Awards because our customer service is so outstanding. We do commercial site lighting repairs. That can be parking lot lights of any great development or it can be parking lot lights in strip malls, something like that. As well as irrigation pumps for golf courses. We're currently working with Lake of the Woods on their irrigation pump system. And we also do equestrian farms, hot tubs. So you name it, from the smallest house to the largest estate, we have got it covered. Again, my husband Thad, he is a licensed master electrician with over twenty years' experience with a huge broad base of knowledge in everything electrical. With this knowledge, our current and potential clients can depend on Evergreen Electric to deliver the highest quality of professional service at competitive, commercial, and residential rates. And again, with the economy as tough as it is, it's good to know that you have a friendly neighborhood electrician who's going to offer service at a very good rate that you can not worry about having to break your pocketbook if your electrician's going to walk in and charge you just $150 just to walk in the door. We don't do that. Our office staff is also highly trained and brings both a wealth of professionalism and customer service to our prospective and current client base. Also, we have been the recipients of, as I said, the grade A on Angie's List. We have won the Super Service Award now three years running. We have an A grade on the Better Business Bureau. We belong to the Electrical Contractors Association. I am myself a member of the National Association of Professional Women. And recently, we have become new members of the Orange County Chamber of Commerce, which we're really very excited about. But that's about it. I would also just like to say, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to be featured here on the Business Spotlight. It means a great deal to us and we thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. And we'll follow that up with the update on the secondary six-year plan.
Yes, sir. Chairman, members of the board. Resident Engineer, I'm getting scrambling. I got to call here.
Actually, it should be Mark.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We met with some VDOT staff concerning the county's secondary road plan about several weeks ago. In your pretty extensive memorandum, there are projects that are currently in the six-year plan in certain priority order along with the allocation of total project cost. In response to changes in road status, traffic counts, and funding levels, VDOT has presented some changes in these concerned priority roads. And I'll just run through those. Priority five, Madison Run Court, Route 694. Priority two, Route 606, Catharpin, Catharpin Road. Priority seven, Route 677, Piney Woods Road. Priority four, Route 636, River Road. An addition of a new project. And Resident Engineer will be up here to speak to that. There's one other thing is that they've recommended updating the Orange County Auxiliary List, which only contains one project this time, Route 692, Old Office Road. This auxiliary list is a future, a list of future priority projects that can be added to or changed as the board would like. It can be a reference for those projects to be added to the plan in the future as additional funding becomes available. Only those unpaved secondary roads with at least fifty vehicle trips per day should be considered in addition to, as an addition, for addition to the auxiliary list. Then, after you hear from today, we anticipate having a public hearing to adopt your secondary six-year improvement plan on April twenty-second, twenty-fourteen. So, next steps is to come to consensus on what additions or deletions that you want to make to the plan and then schedule the public hearing and then hold the public hearing.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Ness with Resident Administrator for VDOT in Warrenton. And this will be my first year going through the secondary six-year plan, so I'm learning as we go. I appreciate y'all's patience with us. I'm going to, since there have been some changes in the plan and some funding changes and there's a few little modifications that are in the plan from last year. I'm going to let Greg Banks, who is in our district office, is our planning and investment management analyst. And he is, he's going to explain some of the changes and some of the recommendations that we have. And we'll hopefully be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to bring you up to speed on some of the information that's before you in this packet here that I prepared. As Mr. David had pointed out, I believe we met, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it's been a few weeks ago, Mark, myself, Ms. Simpson, Mr. David, and Mr. Zodiac, I believe. At that time, we went through your existing secondary six-year plan. At that time, we did not have any draft allocations. Since that time, I have received those draft allocations. I've communicated those with Ms. Simpson and I believe they are, have been put in your booklets there under tab one. So there have been several changes since we met initially with staff. I'd like to go over some of those changes with you and bring you up to speed where we are on the secondary six-year plan. Under tab one, you will see the draft allocations. These figures I just received yesterday, so they're pretty fresh. Yesterday, there are, you will see there's two fund types under tab one. The first fund type is CTB Formula Unpaid State. This is a fund that is used only on gravel roads. Last year, this particular fund type was used on gravel roads that had to carry at least two hundred vehicles per day as set forth by Code of Virginia. One of the changes that has came about since I met with county staff through House Bill, I believe it's 1048, which has passed the House and Senate and the governor has signed, that two hundred vehicle per day threshold has been dropped to fifty vehicles per day. It allows us to manage our money a little more easily and then put those funds on some roads that may not have qualified otherwise. You will see two columns there that are zero. These are, there were some fund types in the out-years last year. However, those funds are no longer available in this year's secondary six-year plan. The final fund type for programming this year's secondary six-year plan is the Telfee Fund. That fund was also shown in last year's secondary six-year plan. This, it is a slight reduction, I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of about three percent, but near the same figure as last year. And that's statewide, it was down a small margin. So you can see your total funds to be programmed each year in the secondary six-year plan there in the final column. Those Telfee funds, I guess, of noted importance can be programmed to hard-surface or gravel road type projects. So only the CTB Formula Unpaid has to be programmed to gravel roads carrying at least fifty vehicles per day or greater.
Quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
What does that do for that unpaved road if it's carrying previously two hundred, now fifty vehicles a day?
If, these funds are typically used to hard-surface gravel roads. Previously, that's typically what the type of project we would be using them on. Certainly, maintenance-type dollars are used to maintain those roadways. Construction dollars are typically used to hard-surface those roads.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
How much is this going to, I mean, going from two hundred to fifty? Seems like you're going to be adding a lot of potential, a lot of roads that would potentially be available for this then.
There's certainly more potential candidates, however, there's less funding this year available than last. Last year, we went through an exercise of adding several projects to the secondary six-year plan based on those cost projections. Those figures have dropped down based on some receipts we've seen come in. So certainly, there's not enough, as much funding projected in future years as was last year. But you are correct, it does create more potential roads that could be in the six-year plan if funding allowed.
Do we have good traffic counts on all the roads that are currently in our primary or auxiliary list?
Uh, it varies from county to county. I'll get ahead of myself a bit, but in Orange County, if you'll see under tab five, I have traffic counts and it varies per row, but for the most part, Orange is actually in pretty good shape. Most of the counts are 2011 or 2012, so they are fairly recent. I have received counts on a couple of roads. When I initially met with county staff, Catharpin Road, which is one of the higher, is the highest priority on the gravel roadside here in Orange County. It carried, I believe, a hundred and twenty vehicles per day, which what our count previously showed, which would not have allowed it to be CTB Formula allocations to be placed on it under the previous threshold of two hundred vehicles per day. Now that that's dropped to fifty, then we can program funds to that project as a result of that reduction. But for the most part, looking over on tab five, just breezing through quickly, 2011, 2012, I see a couple of 2005s, but the majority of them are fairly recent traffic counts. And some in my counties, that's not the case. Orange is in pretty good shape.
Which would indicate that almost all of our roads now meet that criteria.
A good, a good majority, and there's a separate tab in here that actually shows which ones that do meet that criteria. It breaks those out a little bit more, more better defined.
I don't see too many under fifty here.
There's not a lot. There's not a lot. To speak to that a little bit more, under tab two, and this, when I created this booklet, some of these were facts and some of them are fiction now, so I'll kind of weed. Yes, sir.
Before you move to tab two, the CDB dollars, hundred and three thousand. My instinct tells me that'll pave about from here to that wall. Is that, is that a fairly accurate assumption?
Whoop, I didn't hear the figure you quoted, but it, it's, road construction is not cheap. One oh three, yes, sir. One oh three is not going to go very far at all.
Is that a tenth of a mile or something like that?
Under the rural rustic concept, which is our preferred method, I would say, and don't hold me to this exactly, but we've, we've completed mile-long projects for a neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars.
So this is a quarter mile then?
Quarter mile proportionally. Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Under tab two, you'll see some facts there. I wanted to point out that it stated that the CTB formula can only be allocated to roads carrying two hundred vehicles per day or greater. Of course, that has changed. That has not been changed in your packet there, but that has been changed to fifty vehicles per day or greater, which is what the same threshold was for secondary unpaved allocations under the second bullet there. If you'll see back on tab one, there are no secondary unpaid road allocations for programming in the secondary six-year plan this year. To speak to your point just a moment, there's three hundred and fifty-seven miles roughly of secondary roads within Orange County. Of that, about two hundred and ninety-seven miles are paved, meaning that there's about sixty miles of gravel roads in the county. And of that sixty miles, forty-seven roughly carry a traffic count of fifty vehicles per day or greater, meaning that they would be eligible for those funds to be allocated to. Certainly, there's not enough money in here, as we just pointed out, to do forty-seven miles of unpaid roads, certainly. And you'll see some generic estimates and please, I quoted a figure of four hundred thousand rural rustic. Some type projects are widening costs, you know, exponentially more than that. But rural rustic is the preferred method. It's a way we can save a fair bit of money. Tab three I won't go over, other than there's some acronyms there to help you read in the secondary six-year plan. Most of our projects are broken into PE, Right-Away and Construction Phase, in the three phases. Rural rustic projects, we're allowed to hard-surface the roadway on the existing prescriptive easement, therefore, we don't need a right-of-way phase. So then, in those instances, it would be PE and Construction. Tab four, you'll see is last year's secondary six-year plan, as was approved May fourteenth, 2013. And this is sort of a snapshot in time at that particular point. Just to review the projects, the first priority there was LaHore Road. As you can see, that project, just in reading the plan here, the estimate total for PE Right-Away and Construction, excuse me, was nearly 2.1 million. Over the next column, you'll see that there had already been programmed $2 million to that project in previous funding. It's already been allocated directly to that project, meaning that there was another $92,000 needed to fully fund that project. And you can see last year, as of July one, we received another nearly $85,000. So obviously, this year, if that estimate continues at nearly 2.1 million, we would only need another $7,305. So that's kind of how the plan reads and you can see it, there would be no need for future funding on that project thereafter. Excuse me. The second priority is Catharpin Road, and this is one of, I'll beat on this one a little bit longer than most of the rest. This project, you can see, was fully funded while it was a rural rustic project. At one time, this project, it was determined that would be a rural rustic project. Things, since that time, there's been some discussion about potentially widening the project, which is going to be at a substantial cost. Which would mean, obviously, the project would not be fully funded. It would need to require funding for a pretty significant amount of time. I have gotten some estimates that I'm not real comfortable with those estimates yet, with that final cost would be, but it's fair to say that it would be a significant amount of time. I did speak with the project manager to see if there was any other options as a potential, try to meet somewhere in the middle to where we could address any width problems that may be on the roadway. We came up with the idea of being a rural rustic with some spot improvements. Rural rustic allows us to hard-surface the roadway on the existing alignment and make some minimal spot improvements if need be. And then, it has to be the exception. We can't go through and widen a road from one end to the other and call it rural rustic because that's certainly not what it is. But within, with those, with that hybrid idea we're saying, the estimate came out about 1.5 million, which is a considerable increase, but certainly nowhere near where we would be if we went with the traditional widening from one end to the other. Rural rustic gets us some exemptions for stormwater management. If we would go with the widening concept, we would need stormwater management basins. We acquire an additional right-of-way. With rural rustic, we stay within the existing prescriptive easement. So there's quite a bit of cost savings by going with the rural rustic method. That would come by way of the resolution, excuse me, the board passing a resolution deeming this particular roadway as a rural rustic road. So that would be something that we would need to talk about in the, in the near future with supervisors representing that district and maybe some other board members that say see fit to determine what direction we go with this particular project. Obviously, it's the highest priority gravel road in the plan. And with a hundred and fifty vehicles per day shown there on June eighteenth, 2011, it now qualifies for the CTB Formula Unpaid Funds. The next project in the secondary six-year plan, much like Catharpin, had a hundred and ten vehicles per day and now qualifies also for CTB Formula Unpaid Funds. As you can see, the estimate on it is nearly 1.2 million. It was rural rustic, but it's considerably longer than Catharpin Road. It's 2.75 miles. As you can see there, it's fully funded throughout the life of the plan in years two through six. And I remind you, that's now years one through five because this is last year's plan. The next project in the secondary six-year plan was River Road. This is a safety improvement, a short safety improvement there where the road runs adjacent to the river and there's some problems with the river eating out against the embankment there adjacent to the roadway. The estimate's four hundred and twenty-five thousand. As you can see, and this is where last year was a little different, it's being funded sooner than even Indian Town in front of it because it carried 290 vehicles per day. Last year, this was a recipient of CTB Formula Unpaid Funds, which now can be applied to any of these gravel roads. So certainly, that project would still be in the secondary six-year plan, but it may not be as funded as quickly with Catharpin now pulling from that same pot as well as Indian Town Road. Madison Run Court, this project was added into the secondary six-year plan last year as well. It carried 320 vehicles per day. When I went through and looked at each one of these roads through previous knowledge of having been on them or riding them on a computer system we have at work, it showed up as a gravel road. It had a traffic count obviously greater than 200 vehicles per day. And frankly, there was a fair number of roads, but not a significant number of roads over 200 vehicles per day. So it was added last year as a potential project in the secondary six-year plan. It's only fifteen hundredths of a mile. It seemed like a pretty easy road to do. Fortunately, or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, when we went out and looked at the road, it had already been hard-surfaced unbeknownst to myself. I think it was probably done as a result of having some leftover tar there at the area headquarters and going out and a training opportunity surface treating the roadway. So this road obviously would no longer be, needed to be included in the secondary six-year plan based on the fact that it has been hard-surfaced and the fact that it would no longer be eligible for CTB Formula Unpaid Roads because it's no longer unpaid. So that would be one action as far as the proposed secondary six-year plan. Six ninety-four Madison Run Court not being included in the plan due to the fact it's been hard-surfaced.
Is the condition acceptable at this point? I mean, or is it, does it need attention?
I felt like it was acceptable myself. I think, I don't want to speak to Mark on the maintenance side, but it appeared to be acceptable. Yeah, I wish I'd known that last year, could save myself a little embarrassment. Uh, six oh eight Meadows Road, again, was added last year as a result of being greater than two hundred vehicles per day, and obviously, because some of these roads kind of pass the eye test, you go and look at them, you realize pretty quickly that there is a considerable bit of traffic on the road. This being one, and so it was added to the secondary six-year plan last year. As you can see, it was fully funded in the out years of the plan. Um, Piney Woods Road was one that when we went and looked at it after putting it into plan at three hundred vehicles per day, obviously, it eclipsed the two hundred vehicle per day threshold. This particular road is a through road. Some of you may be familiar with it, I'm not certain, but eh the first three tenths of a mile as you leave Route six twelve has several residents as well as a church, and the first three tenths of a mile is paved. The remaining one point four one miles thereabouts is gravel. Um, and looking on Google Earth, the best I can tell, there's about three residents along that road. Um, so the traffic count of three hundred vehicles per day presumably was taken in that paved section, so it was somewhat misleading. So it was added to the plan last year based on the fact that it included three hundred vehicles per day. However, after a closer look, that traffic count is certainly misleading. Since that time, I've requested and received another traffic count from where the pavement and the gravel abut, and on the other end. One end came back at forty-nine, which would not allow it to be in the six-year plan, other end came back at fifty-eight. So it's, it's right on the cusp of being eligible. I'm not sure that it, and, and this is, again, this is you all's decision, I'm not sure, it may make a great business, um, meet a great business need with it having such a low traffic count. Yes, it's eligible. With, with the funding that was, that has been cut from last year, it may not be a priority as much as it was last year. Looking at it having a tra- traffic count of three hundred vehicles per day as opposed to right on that cusp of, of fifty vehicles per day. So, that would be one that be our recommendation potentially to drop from the secondary six-year plan with this year's uh changes. And then finally, Marquee Road is in the secondary six-year plan. This is a project, again, was added last year. This road has a functional classification, a major collector, which makes it eligible for federal funds. And in some years past, it's been a few years now, we did receive some federal funding. Uh, that has not been the case the past several years, so this project has kind of been hanging out in the secondary six-year plan towards the bottom. In case there is some federal funds programmed in the secondary six-year plan, this would be the recipient of those fund types. Uh, finally, there was a bridge project added in the secondary six-year plan last year, and, and I'll, I'll back up on that a little bit. Our bridge program is handed by, handled by our central office. And there are dedicated bridge funds that are allocated by our central office in conjunction with our district bridge staff. Um, through that process, there has been additional funding placed on this road. Now, this funding is not at the discretion of the board of supervisors. It's not something that you all would hold the decision process over adding funds to this project. So, there's money being programmed to this project. It's simply in here for situat- situational awareness so that you all recognize that there is a project on Route six thirty-five Greenwood Road to replace that bridge. At the time at which this secondary six-year plan was completed last year, um, I did not have final numbers from our dedicated bridge funds. Those funds were programmed on this project in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, and the amount between the two years, the sum of those two years was eight hundred and three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which was the exact additional amount needed to fully fund the project. So that project, based on the estimate, is fully funded as well. You'll see there are some line items, generic line items thereafter for, you'll see, traffic services, right-of-way engineering, engineer survey, and road additions for other uh types of improvements that may not be tied directly to a route. Uh, maybe there's a speed study, or maybe there's uh some research that needs to be done on the road prior to identifying something in the secondary six-year plan. It means to pay for some of that research before a specific project is identified. Um, so that's the last year's secondary six-year plan, along with the recommendations we would have moving forward next year. Obviously, with Catharpin Road, there's probably some, some homework and research needs to be done on that. I think six ninety-four Madison Run Court is the one road that, since it's been hard surfaced, is one that can obviously be taken out. And then six seventy-seven would be one that, that you all can consider between now and when we meet next time. And then, kind of to show you how the booklet's laid out here, I spoke to tab five already, being all the uh secondary routes within Orange County and their uh traffic counts to date they were collected. You'll see some of these roads are highlighted in yellow, and that simply delineates that that particular road is included on the secondary six-year plan. You'll see six oh three, six oh six, six oh eight, so that's just a way to designate those roads, or those, uh, or there is a project on that particular segment. Some instances, there may just be a bridge project, but uh as you'll see on six thirty-five. Tab six, this is the same bit of information, but I broke out the unpaid roads separately, sorted them by route number. Um, tab seven is kind of a little bit better presentation, getting back to, I believe it was Mr. Frame had, had pointed out. This is all of your gravel roads here within Orange County, sorted by traffic count in descending order. Excuse me, not all of them. It goes in descending order down to fifty vehicles per day, or those that would be eligible for hard surfacing. And that's where the forty-seven that I quoted on tab two, if you'll see at the bottom, it's actually forty-six point four six according to my numbers, but I kind of rounded things on the tab two. Um, tab eight is some more traffic counts. These are the roads that are eligible for federal funds. I mentioned six sixty-nine. Six twenty-nine is nearly fully funded, but that road is also eligible for federal funds.
What makes them eligible for federal?
For federal funds, a road has to have a functional classification of major collector or greater, which is traditionally your roads that carry heavier, heavier traffic volumes. Um, under tab nine was a statement that I put in here, and based on our draft allocations, obviously, we've seen a reduction from last year, and the recommendation was not to add any additional paid or unpaid projects to the secondary six-year plan. Uh, when we met with staff earlier, we weren't sure exactly where, where our draft allocations were gonna take us. That certainly looks to be where we are at this point. Uh, there was different scenarios as far as if something qualified, Catharpin Road may have went up to eclipse the two hundred vehicles per day, but all that's kind of by the wayside at this point with the threshold dropping to fifty vehicles per day. Um, as Mr. David did point out earlier, uh, we would like to potentially recommend developing a prioritized list of projects that could be added to the secondary six-year plan if funding allowed. And under tab ten, Mr. David also acknowledged that the auxiliary list, or list of projects, potential projects to add to the plan if funding allowed, is down, now to one road, Route six oh two. I think six oh three in past years was on this list. Obviously, it's made its way from this list up to the secondary six-year plan. I think six thirty-six was on this li- list a few years back as well. Um, so, we've been able to pull some of the projects from this list and put them in the secondary six-year plan in, in years past. And as a result, this list is kind of dwindling down to one, to one road, so it'd be nice to, to, to add to this list some, as long as it's understood that it's, it's an auxiliary list and not on the secondary six-year plan, but certainly, it's on a recognized list that we hold uh as a potential list of projects. Um, tab eleven, you'll see different means in which to hard surface a gravel road. Certainly, rural rustic, as I stated before, is the preferred method. We see much, uh, we see a lot of cost savings in doing so. Um, you'll see under alignment, under rural rustic there, it talks to the fact of eighteen-foot of pavement is desirable, and some typical section improvements may be necessary, and that kind of gets into what we were talking about with Catharpin Road, where maybe we can do some sort of a hybrid to maintain that eighteen-foot of pavement. Um, I think a lot of that road already is eighteen-foot wide, so that there would be some minimal improvements that would hopefully be a trade-off in, in, in widening the road to get a substantial eighteen-foot all the way through. Um, but certainly, we wouldn't have to do much widening to, to do so, uh, and hope to, to be able to come to some sort of consensus on that. Under twelve, uh, twelve, there's some code section about the secondary six-year plan, and I did a lot of talking, so I'm gonna skip over that section for fear of someone going to sleep. Uh, tab thirteen, there's a petition, and this particular one is set up for uh landowners to, to sign, showing that there is at least um some sort of uh agreement that they'd like to have something done to their road. This particular one is set up to where we would be acquiring right-of-way. Certainly, this, it has been changed sometimes if there's a rural rustic road, where we won't be acquiring additional right-of-way. Finally, under tab fourteen, you will see some contact information with Mr. Nesmith's phone number and Ms. Wendy Thomas and our district office phone number as well. Um, and I almost missed out. Tab fifteen, you'll see a, a map of Orange County, and highlighted on that map are the existing priorities in the secondary six-year plan, along with their priority numbers. So you can see exactly where those projects fall within the county. Um, I did a lot of talking, so I will be quiet if you all have any questions. I'd be happy to entertain those. If not, I appreciate your time.
I look at the uh projected fiscal year allocations.
Yes, sir.
And in the future, they add up to more than tab one.
Where are you comparing? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just looking at the, uh, on, under tab four.
Sure.
I'm looking at future allocations.
Yes, sir.
And then I go down and, and sum up in a particular year. And they add up to more than uh what we've got uh on tab one in terms of the projected allocations.
Correct. The, the, the allocations that are shown under tab four, on the, the cover sheet of tab four, they are the allocations that were projected in last year's secondary six-year plan. Um, and as I've mentioned before, that was a kind of a snapshot in time based on those projections. What you see on tab one is those new projections, and that goes back to the point where I was saying before, we have seen a fair, fairly significant reduction, as you're pointing out, in those allocations.
So the, this is new money in addition to what's in tab four.
Tab four was last year's, make sure I say this in a way that hopefully will not confuse you or myself. Tab four, the only money that we actually pocketed under tab four was the first year, or what is our construction budget. Everything else was a projection, okay? Now that we've rolled forward a year, our new projections under tab one, the only money that we will pocket this year come July one is these figures in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, okay? So, and these will even potentially change a little bit. I think you'll see um, two hundred seventy thousand seven sixty-four under C T B formula unpaved and a tail fee of eighty-eight five twenty-one.
And put it another way, I think Greg's saying the numbers last year were aspirational.
I think that's fair.
And that this year's reality is significantly less.
Last year, the governor's transportation bill was passed, and there was uh, there was lots of uh revenue generators, and a lot of figures that were, the figures that were given to us were, there had been no precedent to know where we might be, so they were projections. Since that time, we've actually had some cash receipts and know what we're generating, so this is a better fine-tuning of those figures.
And just one other thing, just chairman, through the board, the numbers that we were working with several weeks ago and what's now before you, there's quite a bit of daylight between the two, and not, not necessarily in a positive sense. There were a lot more dollars, uh, potential, but now the general assembly's done their work and the governor's done his.
I would point out, that's not just in Orange County though, so the pain has felt all around.
I notice also in tab four, they've got a number of, uh, a number of places where you already have uh past funding. Uh, so that funding, uh, when you had that past funding, that's just sitting there waiting for the uh, for the next project, or is there any o- opportunities for reallocating previous funding to uh different projects?
Are you spe- you speaking to the column that says previous funding?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's just take La Hor Road for example.
Okay.
All right, there's three phases of that project. There's P E right-of-way construction. The total estimate is two million ninety-nine thousand. Obviously, we've already allocated two million seven thousand. So that money to date is being spent on P E or design or creation of plans. Uh, I'm not sure that we're at the right-of-way phase yet, but however, we'd be purchasing right-of-way very soon, I would think. Um, so, that money is being spent as we, as we move on that project. Certainly, we haven't spent all of it, because a good portion of that estimate is construction. We won't be actually spending those funds until we move into the construction phase of the project. So those monies are allocated to that project.
You know, you know, I was just looking at, if you're looking at something like uh Indian Town Road, where you don't have any fu- previous funding.
Correct.
And uh, and you're, you don't finish getting enough funding out of that till two thousand eighteen, nineteen. I was just wondering if there are opportunities, not that I'm pro- pro- promoting any at this time, but for taking any of the previous funding from others to move some of these proj- some of the other projects more, more rapidly.
There may be potential there, however, some of this funding doesn't mix and match, whereas like, La Hor Road is funded using some federal dollars that couldn't be used on a gravel road. Some of our gravel roads, we can't mix those dollars with paved dollars, so there's, this is a little bit more simplified.
Is what you're saying.
Exactly, yes, sir.
To, to that point, you made a comment about uh the Marquee Road, uh, six sixty-nine, that two million dollar project. Are you, did I understand you to say that you're waiting primarily on federal dollars to fund that? There, there, you're not looking for s- any significant state dollars, so we're, we're essentially waiting on the feds?
There, there, the, the amount of state dollars that's being allocated to Orange County is being consumed by projects ahead of it in priority, would be the first and foremost driving force. Once some of these projects in front of it that are higher priorities deemed by the, by the board are completed, then those monies in future years can be allocated towards Marquee Road. Um, it is federally eligible, so if we were to receive federal funds in the future, they would not be allowed to be allocated on these roads even ahead of it, so they would have to go to Marquee Road. But however, at this time, we're not receiving any of those fund types. I keep walking this way, I don't mean to.
It's all right.
Might be a smart move on your part. Especially when you get to Route six oh eight.
Yes, sir.
If they take some of the non-used maintenance money from that road and apply it towards paving, it might make a difference. We have, I think, three pickup trucks of people have left under the road this winter. That's how deep the potholes have been. So, it's been uh interesting to say the least.
I appreciate the input.
It has been an interesting road to navigate. I've been there a couple times.
Yes.
Which is probably indicative of that traffic count that I pointed out.
Which is probably low at this point.
Understood.
Maybe that's how they um get the traffic counts to get low.
I'm not aware of.
Hasn't slowed the traffic down at all.
I'm not aware of those statistics.
Yeah.
I do have a quick question for Mr. Nesmith. It has nothing to do with this once you're, once you're finished.
If anybody else?
Very good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Understandable.
I guess, and Kirk's in the back room, but I guess two months ago, we had a um, a, a trash truck run off the side of two, on two thirty-one between um Somerset and um Lover's Lane Road, and that area was supposed to be fixed, and there are two yellow cone, or orange cones out there on the side of the road. And, and I'm here to tell you, I mean, it, it is ate away into the road, and um the ditches through there, through, through that one little particular area are really bad. If somebody else runs off the road, I mean, you're not, you don't, there is no shoulder, there is no, the, 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 um, where the yellow line, or the white line, excuse me, is, the, the asphalt is even broken and, and gone. So it's not even the full width of the lane through there. So, um, if we could find out when that's gonna be fixed, and if you could get back with us and let us know, because at, at some point, somebody's gonna come around that curve and.
Okay, that's on two thirty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, it, it need, it needs to be fixed, and the funny thing is, right now, there's just two little yellow cones out there, but the cones aren't right at where it is, so you come around the curve and, you know.
Well, I'll, I'll go look at it right from me.
Okay. All right, I appreciate you.
I've got one for you, Mark.
If you need me to ride with you. Like we did the other week.
You're, you're uh, well, welcome to.
You can go eat a barbecue with Shane again.
Get some barbecue.
The uh, uh, access, in terms of your road plowing priorities, does access to the uh fuel, oil, or propane distribution centers have any play in what your priorities are?
Well, yeah, basically, our priorities are, you know, the, the higher volume, the primary routes, higher volume secondary routes, and uh.
But fuel oil or, or home heating oil or uh propane does not fit into that priority category?
Not, no, uh, unless someone specifically, you know, unless we look at it in the bigger picture and look at all the other routes and, and making sure that, uh, I'm, I don't mind looking at it and see if we can, you know.
I, I've just had a, a, a couple of uh constituents, uh, they didn't have any fuel, and they talked to their supplier, and he said they, they couldn't get to the uh distribution center yet. I don't know whether that's a, a big thing, and obviously, this is the first time I've ever heard it in a few years, but uh I just wondered whether that was played into priorities at all.
No, if I, if I know what route it is, I can look at it and see where it would fall typically in our, in our plan, uh, and we can, you know, we can.
All right, let me see. If, I'll, I'll go back to the people and see if they wanna pursue it further, and so I'll send you some.
If it's on a lower volume secondary road, then, you know, chances are, it's not real high on the list, but.
One more thing for you. Uh, Route six eleven, where it turns into Route six oh four, between twenty and uh six twenty-one.
Okay. Is that, is uh, go, uh?
It, it's Gold Dale Road, it's, it's, uh, we have a very large volume of truck traffic now, uh, dump trucks.
It, it's Gold Dale Road, it's, uh, we have a very large volume of truck traffic now, uh, dump trucks. Uh, they're doing a project in Spotsylvania County that's accessible only through Orange County. And a company out of Chesterfield is the contractor. And they are running probably thirty to forty loads of gravel a day down that road.
Okay.
And the right shoulder heading east is exactly what Ms. Saps was talking about down on two thirty-one. The right side of the road, um, a couple of the curves is gone.
Okay, so that's, that's near the Orange County line and, uh, and two, and six oh four?
No, it's actually between, uh, the Exxon Station on twenty, right there at six eleven. As you come down six eleven, and then it turns into six oh four before you get to six twenty-one.
Okay.
That whole stretch of road, and it's going to do nothing to get, but get worse. They have another ten months of work to do down there.
Okay.
And it's going to be a whole lot of traffic going down there.
Okay, six eleven.
And one last reminder. Good. We talked last time Greenwood Road, the ditches, right there before the bridge. If you can do nothing but get a ditch there so the water doesn't run back in the road, at least it gives you something until it actually gets paved. But there, there is no ditch whatsoever coming off that hill. And all the water just pulls straight down and is taking the dirt right into it. It's, and since, of course, it's been so nice and dry, it, it is, it's mush.
Okay.
So, I've made my plug again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. Alrighty. Uh, with that then, move on to public comment. Anyone signed up? Okay, in that case, we go to board comment.
I have something, and I'm thinking I probably won't be the only one who wants to comment on this. But I just want to say, I think what we did on Friday, um, and were a part of, um, for those of you who aren't aware, um, we've had a big secret that we've kept for, um, several months. And, um, as exciting as it was, it, you know, you like to keep, you, you don't, when you have good news, you want to be able to share the good news. But, you know, we had, um, had to keep our lips tied really tight and, um, but, you know, green industries, green applications that purchased, um, or is working with someone that purchased the, um, American Press building in Gordonsville. And, um, Robert Butters is, um, moving his operation, um, to Gordonsville. And within three years, they will be fully up and running with three hundred and twenty-three employees. Um, and then with, on top of that, our staff here did such a great job with, um, you know, keeping it going and, you know, Tom and, and Brian and Karen and Robin and Economic Development. Um, I, I was getting to her, I was getting to her, I know she's in the back. Um, you, you guys worked tirelessly, uh, to, to really make this happen. And, and one of the things that I, I wanted to say, and I, I tried to say it the other day, so often people say that Orange County isn't business friendly. And they poo-poo on us all the time. I, I want it to be known, that man chose Gordonsville, Virginia. He didn't settle for Gordonsville, Virginia. He chose Gordonsville, Virginia. He chose Orange County and we were competing against other locations that offered them more money, that offered them more glamour, that offered them, you know, whatever. But he picked Orange, and he picked Orange for a reason. So, uh, it really bothers me from time to time when, when people, um, downplay where we live and, and say we're not business friendly, but that man's getting ready to make a ten million dollar investment in Gordonsville. And he's doubling his company that he started five years ago with six people, and now he's up to four hundred and twenty-five. And he's getting ready to add another three hundred and twenty-five jobs. So I think it's exciting for Orange County and, um, I think that we as a county need to kind of get on board and start supporting ourselves and believe that we are a great place to live. And, um, it starts up here with us, and we need to believe it and we need to send that message out to everybody. So, again, I just want to thank our staff that worked so hard on this. Um, we get to take the credit for it because that comes with all the fame of being a board supervisor along with those big paychecks. But the, the truth, the, the truth of the matter is, it's the citizens of Orange County. It's, it's the town of Gordonsville. It's what we have to offer, and it's the hard work of our staff that made what happened on Friday possible. So, um, I just want to thank the staff and I want to thank where we live, because I'm here to tell y'all, we rock. So there you go.
I can add a couple of that, uh, he, uh, did a, uh, a, a short video, talked a little bit about his business. That video is available on his website.
Oh, nice.
So, uh, you'll be able to see that, uh, uh, his website tells a little bit more about what he does. But that, that video was a, a good, good summary of what his business is about and, and so people can see that. Uh, he was particularly impressed with how fast all this occurred. This was a, uh, a real, uh, rapid, uh, operation because he had some commitments he had to make very quickly. And, uh, he, uh, gave us, uh, made a, uh, a T-shirt that says, "Virginia is for closers." So we could do that in a hurry, and, uh, so, uh, he was impressed with, uh, with how well everything happened and how rapidly it happened.
Yeah, and I guess we probably ought to thank the governor in there too.
No, I wasn't gonna thank the governor, but I will say that one, one of the things that our staff did was manage the state side of this very well. Uh, the, part of the responsiveness was, was the, our staff's ability to, uh,
Get this.
Get the state to react, which was not an easy task, uh, e- either. So, uh, I, I add that to the kudos. That, that was a, a major accomplishment to get them to respond, which they are not inclined to do, as, as you all found out very quickly.
One more thing with that, um, Economic Development Authority has worked very hard, along with the, uh, Economic Development Office. But it shows where nationwide, the trend is ninety days or less that a business wants to be able to locate somewhere. So, in, in the old days, it used to be two years. It got down to six months. And now, as a industry trend, it is ninety days. And it is very important that, uh, we have the staff that we do that can work and make things work that quickly. And we need to continue the such with the industrial park and other properties in the county so that we have product that we can supply people with.
All, all in all, I th- I think I summed it up in the freelance start. It was a damn good day. I, I have one last thing I'd like to, uh, bring up and not on this item. Um, I got reminded, uh, by a friend of mine on the last meeting, uh, when Evan Baines came up to present his, um, project that he's working on for school, that, um, we can be a rather formidable group here, although we don't try to be. Um, it's difficult, and I think we've all heard people say that when you come up to that podium, it's a little bit different than our side sitting here.
Intimidating.
Very much. And for the high school senior to get up and present himself as well as he did, regardless of, of the theme, um, I thought he did an excellent job. I thanked him, but I didn't give him enough kudos, I think, for what he did. So, I said I would and I have. Do we have any other board comment? Okay, in that case, we'll move on to the action items. First one, to ratify the approval of the letter of interest to the Federal Communications Commission regarding Connect America Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Boy, you haven't had one that easy, have you?
But I, I, just if I could. No, you don't have to. Moving right along.
Sometimes you learn, no.
Well.
Give me your shovel.
I'll pass.
All right, we move on to seven B, reschedule of Route Three Public Comment, period. Now you, now you've got something.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is much more mundane than we asked. Uh, you've been scheduling, uh, public input sessions for, uh, the Route Three process. And you had, uh, had scheduled one, uh, for March twenty-fifth. Because we've canceled and now rescheduled the charrette process because of the weather, uh, we would recommend that you cancel the March twenty-fifth public input and reschedule it for April eighth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we go to seven C, formerly three E, uh, ratifying the Signature of Governor's Opportunity Fund.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Do you want that in, as a roll call, sir?
No, I just wanted, I just wanted it to be to, the significance of this is more than I would think that we ought to have in the consent agenda.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 No brainer. Okay, appointments to boards, commissions and committees.
I have one. Actually, I have two. Sorry, but let me get to my little, um, thing. Um, I have to make an appointment to, um, the Planning Commission. And it just went away. I don't know, my computer's acting crazy. Um, I'd like to, um, Jason Capel is actually going to resign from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I will be making a recommendation that Andy, um, Hutchison moves to the Board of the Zoning Appeals. And Jason Capel will, um, be my appointee to, um, the Planning Commission for District One.
All right, I would like to appoint Sam Kessler to the Germana Community College Board as the at-large rotating member.
All right, any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I, I expect more decorum from Jason this go around.
Um, I'll let you talk to him about that.
I will. Okay, uh, discussion items, long-term disability insurance proposal. Ryan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at your April, February twenty-fifth meeting, you approved amendments to the county's personnel policy. These amendments address, uh, a requirement, uh, mandate, let me rephrase that. Uh, the Virginia Assembly gave to you that all time employees after, hired after, uh, January first twenty-fourteen be provided with short-term and long-term disability insurance. This, uh, insurance or this benefit with the administration through a paid time off process and we've done those necessary, I guess, uh, amendments to the personnel policy. However, during development amendment, staff became aware that, uh, those employees hired prior to January first, uh, were available through sick leave, uh, banks and, and through sick leave, be able to, to handle their short-term disability. Uh, what we found out is that, uh, there were quite a few, uh, employees, they carried just a few days or, uh, a few weeks of sick leave that were available to them. This situation created a financial challenge for these employees if they were to exhaust all available sick and annual leave balances before able, being able to return to work. While there's a policy for other employees to donate sick leave days to the employee through the sick leave bank, it does introduce a high degree of financial uncertainty for the affected employee. This uncertainty is especially acute at times when the employees attending to the matter giving rise to the disability. Uh, our insurance advisors have recommended that, uh, we provide an employer-funded long-term disability insurance benefit as a means to address this situation. We have representatives from Digital Benefit Advisors today here, uh, who will go through, uh, their proposal. A copy of, uh, background information is in your agenda pack.
Great. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Roger Higgins and, uh, my colleague Carrie Abbott, Carrie Bartlett, sorry. Um, uh, we are with Digital Benefit Advisors and we work with, uh, the county with respect to the overall benefits. But one of the, the specific areas that's been of interest is this area of disability. And the reason that we're having this conversation is that the twenty-twelve General Assembly passed a law that, that requires, um, all public entities, all counties and, uh, governmental entities in the state to provide short-term and long-term disability coverage to employees hired after January first of twenty-fourteen. Um, and, and certain other employees who opt into, um, into this program. So, uh, this creates an issue where there, um, is a different level of benefits for new employees hired after January and existing, or what I, what we often call legacy employees. Uh, the new, uh, employees get the short-term and long-term disability. The legacy employees, um, have access to, uh, a sick leave policy that's in place, that has been in place for many years. Um, but they don't have, uh, a, a, a real disability program except for, uh, what they call V R S, uh, retirement disability, uh, which is a very high threshold to meet. Um, and, and someone could be out of work for some time. And when they, uh, qualify for that program, uh, then they're done working and they're, uh, permanently, uh, disabled and retired. So this creates an issue where we have very different levels of benefits and employees could be treated differently. An employee who is a, a new employee who becomes disabled, uh, would have access to a, uh, a fairly robust and rich level of benefits and a legacy employee would not. Uh, so that tends to be, um, a problem. Um, our firm has been consulting with, um, um, out of the six hundred entities that are subject to this, we've literally been, um, consulting with hundreds of them. Um, and so we have a pretty good sense of what other folks are doing. And so our process was to obtain the, the census information, meaning the, the dates of birth, the, um, the job titles, the incomes and, and all of that kind of information, as well as the sick leave balances and the annual leave balances to look and crunch some numbers and see, you know, what, what kind of balances, uh, sick leave balances do the legacy employees have? And what, what would it cost if, if the county were to implement a program that would be somewhat, uh, similar to what the new employees are getting? And one of the, uh, one of the things that we found was that there's a pretty significant, uh, percentage of employees, um, who don't have a, a real large balance of sick leave accrued. And page six of the handout that was passed around, uh, shows you a table of the balances of hours. And you'll see that about forty-five percent of the employee base, out of the hundred and seventy-four employees, have just fifty-two hours on average, um, accrued. So if something happens and they become sick or disabled, um, they have, um, just over a, um, just over a week of time. Um, and then another, um, you add another few percent there for, let's see, about sixty-one and a half percent of total employees have less than two hundred hours of sick time, which would be, um, I guess somewhere around, uh, five weeks of time. So that's a, a little bit of context of the, the issue that we have, uh, creating the, the different classes of employees. Um, what, what we were able to do is take that census information and go to, uh, the market and specifically to the same carrier who administers the, uh, the program for all the new employees, all the hybrid employees, and obtain a quote for the cost of covering long-term disability only, not short-term disability, but long-term disability, uh, which would pay a percentage of these legacy employees' pre-disability income uh, up to sixty percent after meeting a waiting period of ninety days. Um, we actually looked at several options, but the, the one that, that seemed to be the best value was the one, uh, that had a ninety-day waiting period. The cost of that, that program was thirty, let's see, thirty-two thousand dollars annually. So there were, and this is on page nine, there were three options that we looked at. Long-term disability with a one hundred and eight, one hundred and eighty-day waiting period. Uh, that was twenty-six thousand dollars annually. Option two was with a ninety-day waiting period, which is thirty-two thousand. And option three was sixty days, which was, uh, forty-one thousand dollars annually. And, um, we believe that the best value is option number two.
So if somebody has two weeks of sick time, they get sick, use those two weeks. And if it's something that's going to be long-term, they don't start getting paid until ninety days then?
That's correct.
If they have annual leave, they could also.
They can use that.
They could use annual leave, they could use sick leave, or if they, they also have the ability to purchase an individual, um, short-term disability. Um, and, and that could bridge that gap as well. The bigger, you know, the, the, out of the short-term disability and long-term disability, that's the difference there is, is the difference between, uh, frequency and severity. Or, of course, um, short-term disability would be a pregnancy, for example, or if you have an outpatient surgery and you're out for a few weeks, uh, that would constitute more of a short-term disability. You have those more frequently, but they obviously. You have those more frequently, but they obviously tend to be, um, less severe. Longer-term disability could be, uh, you know, you're not able to ever work again, or it could be that you're only able to work, uh, a portion of time, uh, and you're out for five years or a couple of years or several years. Um, so, and, and our, our feeling is that the more important risk to insure is the long-term disability. And, um, I, I, I would also suggest to you that it's a tremendous value when you look at the cost of thirty-two thousand dollars a year and you break it down, uh, by a hundred seventy-four employees. Uh, our calculation of that cost is a hundred eighty-eight dollars a year. Um, and there's no way that any individual's going to be able to go out and obtain, um, long-term disability coverage, um, of that quality on their, on their own for that kind of cost.
The concern I have though is that, and I don't have the exact number, but it, just eyeballing the numbers. It looked like only about a third of our employees can get to the ninety days with any kind of coverage. Either, either because of sick leave balance or annual leave balance. So there's a, for, for most employees, there's a very large gap that we have no bridge for. I mean, they, they, they're in control of that to, to some degree. They can build up their, uh, balances of sick and, uh, annually, which.
We don't have a short-term disability.
And, and, but, well, but, but my point is that are we, are we buying a fix that's fixing a problem that the employees aren't, aren't worried about at all? Uh, because it, it, it will have, to some employees, it, it won't have a great deal of value. Because if you take this person that has eight hours of sick leave, that's a big bridge between eight hours of sick leave, leave and ninety days of a benefit starting. I mean, they're going to disappear from the radar screen in that length of time, I would guess. And so, that, I, I'm concerned that we're, we're aiming at, maybe aiming, aiming at the wrong target here. I don't have enough information to, to be certain of that, but the, the indications are that that could be the case. And you've looked at numbers more than I have, certainly Brian.
Go ahead.
Well, you certainly can, you can take the position that, um, that you, um, would insure the short-term piece and not the long-term piece. But I would suggest that, um, in, in our experience, the bigger risk is certainly a long-term disability. If you're out of work for years as opposed to a couple of months, most folks can make it for a couple of months, but, but not for a period of years. And so, um, I think that, uh, the approach that, that most folks would look to, um, to implement would be, let's put the long-term disability in place and if someone feels the need to pick up that few, uh, few weeks or a month's difference, then allow them to purchase disability on their own. And they can do that, because remember, they're not getting anything right now.
Now, now, uh, somebody who gets sick and they're, they're unable to work, uh, after twenty, thirty days, uh, uh, does that person need to remain an employee of the thing during the period he's not working to be able to get this benefit?
He would continue to be eligible for twelve weeks, um, because of the Family Medical Leave Act, if it's, um, a medical disability. So they would be not working, but they would be covered under the plan for those twelve weeks. And then what would happen after that point is that it would transition, um, for the medical benefits. For example, they could purchase Cobra coverage at that point and there's a little bit of a, a severage, I guess, between employment. But you would continue that coverage for that employee on the short-term if you decided to offer like a voluntary short-term disability coverage and then it would continue for the long-term disability.
I'm just saying, this guy's, you know, now he's out of work for six months, a year. Uh, we're still paying this, this, uh, hundred eighty-eight dollars a year for him, which is, uh, uh, but he's technically still an employee even though, uh, we've hired somebody to replace him and, uh.
Right, and there's a waiver of premium after they go out on disability, which would mean that you wouldn't be responsible for paying the premiums once they're out on, um, during that waiting period. So you do get a little bit of a reprieve when it comes to that.
I, I mean, I'm not worried about a hundred eighty-eight dollars a year for somebody who's totally disabled, but.
Right.
Uh, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a sense of, of what is it that, uh, you know?
And I also think that part of the thought process, um, when looking at the long-term disability only is that the cost of that piece is much less than offering employer-paid short-term disability. Because like Roger stated, you've got a lot more frequency with short-term disability. So it would cost significantly more. So that is something that we could look at, at offering at a voluntary piece so that each employee could determine if it was worth it to them to purchase that coverage. The long-term disability, covering it for everyone, gives them that protection at a much lower, um, cost than what they could get on their own. Whereas getting the short-term disability, um.
Now with the, uh, Family Leave Act, we've got to keep them for twelve weeks, that's, uh, what, eighty-four days? So, okay.
And we did obtain a quote for short-term disability. I don't have that in front of me. Uh, Mr. David, you may recall that, but I want to think that the, the total cost of short-term and long-term was approaching a hundred.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it was about seventy thousand dollars, pretty significant, uh.
Let me, uh, just add that, remember back where we started with this, it was dealing with the hybrid employees and, and, um, uh, thinking that there might be an opportunity to go to a paid time off program for employees so that you wouldn't be having these large balances. And it was, it was a much more manageable self and it was self-directed on folks using their time off rather than a, in, in a, in kind of a policing situation between the supervisor and employee. What we found out that, um, to have a voluntary, short-term paid time off for the legacy employees, you couldn't rate it because you wouldn't know what the, the pool of potential coming in. And so by offering this long-term, I, I would submit that this is at least a first step and, and that then the board is positioned to really look at a paid time off program. But you've got to get everybody comfortable with what that means and, and actually that they're not losing something in the transition. So, uh, back to Mr. White's point, I think one of these things is that paid time off is a, is a ma, uh, is a way of managing this that all organizations, the private sector is going to, I know the state is, is, is going to that. And I would, would submit that it's not long before local governments, uh, Orange County size will be implementing.
I think the question that we would need to analyze and be able to answer is while we talk about the cost of the short-term disability, um, what is our cost when someone goes out on short-term disability? So you see, what would happen is in order for you, as a, a legacy employee, to opt in to short-term and long-term, they would have to give up that, that leave.
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, that's how the state did it several years ago. You, you choose if you're going to go to the new system or you're going to continue the old system. So what are we paying out over the course of a year when people are on the old system and they're, and they're burning up time? Because I'm thinking it probably isn't the same. But if that's something we could actually look at, I mean, if we are incurring the same cost anyway, somebody, when they, when they leave and we're having to write out a check for, you know, however many hours of leave they have or, you know, I'm thinking it's probably not a lot, because it probably doesn't happen often because we don't have enough employees that, that meet that. But that would definitely be something that we would want to look at, where, where is the cost benefit to us?
Under the current versus a new.
Because while you're hearing this seventy thousand dollar number, we might already be paying something similar to that anyway when people are going out on short-term disability. And the difference is, this is going towards, you know, this is going through a, um, they have to be qualified to get short-term disability again. You know, we're not arbitrarily going, oh yeah, you're eligible, you're not eligible. This is how you weed out. Are people just taking a bunch of time off because they have that time there? Because we are not policing it, their supervisors aren't policing it.
Right.
But in order to be qualified for short-term disability, you, you literally need more than a doctor's note that says, this employee can't work for ninety days. You, you have to prove why you're on disability.
And that's the insurance company's job to pursue.
Exactly.
And it takes your HR staff out of the middle of policing those kinds of things.
So there might even, I don't, and I don't know if you can actually, uh, enumerate that and put a cost to it, but, but that's probably what we need to look into. How many people are really using the guise of getting a doctor's note that just says, this employee can't work for ninety days or whatever? And we're not actually, I mean, we might be paying that much already and we don't even know it.
Uh, one concern I have is forty-two percent of the employees in the county have been here less than five years.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a trend we're going to continue or are we going to work to keep employees longer? Do we want to get rid of them after five years or do we want to keep them for twenty years? And one of the interesting things on page ten, it says that, um, adding this line of cover, coverage would reduce the rate of the hybrid employees from fifty-nine to fifty-six cents.
What is that?
We're doing the budget right now and I don't see very many new employees coming on board. Is it costing that much for these hybrid employees that it's going to greatly reduce, offset our premiums?
No, you have, um, you placed your hybrid employees with, uh, the standard insurance company. And, uh, so they have provided, uh, I guess you might say, uh, an additional sweetener or inducement, um, to say, hey, you know, we'd love to have the entire pool because it gives them a more complete, uh, risk profile. Um, so we'll provide a, a few points. That's not a, a huge amount of money, it doesn't.
What does that mean?
Right.
What does that actually mean, which is fifty-nine to fifty-six?
Printing on the paper, quite honestly.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, three cents, what does this mean in terms of?
And over time, as you hire more employees, so in the first several years, it's not going to be a big differentiator.
Understand, but is this fifty-six cents per day, per hour, per, per fortnight?
No, I mean, it, they, those add up, um, it, it's per, uh, unit of salary, so per thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's fifty-six.
Those are real dollars and how, I mean, how material they are, we can't say. I think it, I think it is worthy to, to note though, uh, because, uh, it, you know, it's, it's not a huge percentage. But certainly if you're going to, you know, offer something that costs you, you know, thirty-some thousand dollars a year, if there's something that mitigates the cost, it's certainly.
Absolutely, but it, just the way it was presented, it was.
Maker.
Yeah.
No, but if I've got a hundred employees making thirty thousand now, it's probably a little, it's, but still not a lot.
Well, and that's the other reason, I mean, if you look at this, let's, let's say, let's be honest. If approximately fifty percent of our employees are less than or around that five-year mark, this is a ben, this is a huge.
It's a very big benefit.
For them, because I, I'm sorry, nobody who's been here five years has really truly accumulated that much leave. They, they just really haven't. This, now, the people who probably won't opt into this are the pe, that twenty-five percent who've been here longer than ten years.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an option, just to, just to be clear. This is not a, you know, you can opt in or out. This would be, if you're a legacy employee, this is something you get.
From the, the long term, the long term.
Talking about short-term, I'm sorry, I'm still kind of hung up on the short-term.
Right, right, so on the short-term, if we made it voluntary, employees could pick and choose. And you're right, those long-term employees would need to and we would counsel them against signing up for it because they have enough time to.
And they're not gonna, they're not going to want to change their leave status.
Exactly.
They're not going to want to go to, because they're getting, they're building up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're happy with what they have.
If we switch it over the way the state switched it over, that, and that's the big, I mean, because you can't arbitrarily go through and look at everybody, okay, that's it. I mean, I guess we could.
Right, and we wouldn't be proposing changing everyone to a PTO policy or anything.
Let's go back, I guess, back to where we started from. You all, a, at the first meeting, uh, you know, County Attorney Rob Ford and Glenda had worked out, out on, um, this, the hybrid employee. And then, um, I think I reminded that this was a policy matter that the New County Administrator, uh, could, could take a look into. And, um, we, I looked into it to see if we might be able to migrate everybody over to this same kind of plan that's, that, uh, proved impractical, uh, given the shortness of time. And so, uh, but it did reveal this, this risk or at least exposure that it lo, that all employees have, uh, legacy employees. I think one of the other things that it needs to be underscored, if somebody is, is receiving long-term disability insurance, there's like a clock ticking between that and, and the leave and when the job has to be held open. These comp, the company that provides this, the, the managers of those, these benefits, these claims, will want to do everything to get the employee back to work. And so they will actually fund accommodations at work that would allow that employee to come back. So what you're trying to do is to get the employee back to work. It's not necessarily to get them to a permanent disability.
And it's even if it's partially back at work, it's making accommodations, you know, can they not sit at the desk all day? Do they need, you know, some type of stool to sit on, you, different things like that, that, that would help them come back to work. Um, because that's the goal. And then at the same time with social security disability, if someone is truly that disabled, they help them go through that process. So it's actually someone guiding them through the process because it's in their best interest to get them on social security disability at that point. Um, and so that's another helpful thing with having the long-term disability is that you then have someone that's working, um, on the employee's behalf to get them through that process, whereas.
And get them through the VRS system if that's, uh, appropriate?
Um, it would not be assistance with VRS, um, because they would be two separate companies. So, um, I, that would be a, a different process, yeah.
But to your point, I think that, uh, there's still a, a long, you know, pretty big, uh, bridge, uh, a, a gap to bridge. You know, there, there of course is the option to do, you know, we were thinking that number two makes the most sense, but, uh, number three is more expensive, but that's sixty days, that's not sixty workday, uh, waiting period, but that's a, a sixty-day, um, straight-up period. And that, um, is certainly, um, helps to bridge that gap quicker, but it does cost more.
Yeah, I'm, there's a lot of moving pieces here because, you know, one inclination is to say that, that at ninety days, uh, you, you, you cap the sick leave accruals, so they don't get to.
Yeah, exactly.
Eight hundred hours and seven hundred hours and five hundred hours, but you can't. Because they can be on sick leave and not qualify for the long-term disability. Because you, just because, there are sicknesses that don't qualify for this, for the long-term. I've, I've seen that before.
That is true, so the long-term disability would only cover a personal illness or injury. It would not qualify if you had to take care of a spouse or a child or someone else.
That's right.
Typically speaking, um, I've not heard of any at the employee level of a disability not being approved when it's gone through the process, when it's a true disability, they're not able to come back to work and that kind of thing. Um, I think occasionally the back issues can be, um, ones that they look at a little bit more strictly. But as long as there's doctor documentation that they can't come back to work.
But then they go to, to social security or, or VRS.
Correct, after they've been out for two years.
This is one of those things that's, you know, it's sort of in no man's land frankly. It takes a long time to kick in and it only kicks in in a very select set of circumstances where you don't also qualify for either social security or, or, uh, VRS and those kind of things. I mean, it's a, I.
And that's for, that's for illnesses or problems occurred outside the work center.
Yes.
Right, if it's in the work, then it's workman's comp.
Workman's comp.
So there's, that's what, that's.
So you've got, uh, you've got some leverage. I mean, there's some.
Yeah, I would suggest to you that, uh, I consult with lots of entities. You know, if you, if you ask people what constitutes a, a good benefits program, um, they're going to tell you medical insurance. Secondly, they'll probably tell you, uh, when you ask employees dental insurance, vision insurance, maybe life insurance. Disability insurance will be perhaps one of the least appreciated, uh, but I would suggest to you that it ought to be probably second on that list. Because people are, are inclined to protect, um, the cars, they'll buy car insurance, um, homeowner's insurance. But what about their income? Because if you can't work, if you can't pay for your rent. If you can't pay for your mortgage, if you can't pay for your health insurance, if you can't pay for the food on your table, you know, I think it is a, uh, a tremendous value to offer something like this to employees. Where folks, if they have to go out on their own and purchase, uh, disability insurance, uh, our experience is they won't do it. Um, because it's too expensive. Um, I went out individually to purchase, uh, disability insurance for myself based on my own, you know, demographics and health conditions and risk. Um, the cost to me was two hundred and fifty dollars a month. This cost is a hundred eighty-eight dollars a year. So purchased in a group setting is, is a, is a real value, um, there I would suggest.
All right, um, based on the time and since we have a dinner meeting, um, how do we want to proceed? Because we, we do have to leave.
I mean, in, in terms of the idea whether you go to a, a different, uh, leave system or not, I would say we ought to try to pursue the long-term disability. And given, uh, uh, and I, again, I, I sort of agree with you that, uh, yeah, you can struggle for a few months.
Uh after that, things really go in, you know, to hell in a handbasket, so I would I would pursue the ninety days. But I wouldn't get upset if somebody said we need to go to sixty.
Well, I would look into the short-term disability part of it. I would like for us to look into that well as well, and it would actually be ninety days because short-term disability is is twelve weeks because of FMLA.
Yeah.
And um I'll give you a little more information later. It needs to be the ninety days. There's there's a reason.
Yep.
Yeah.
It needs to be.
One other thing, with board's information, uh Director of Finance has established a reserve fund for the hybrid employees that's short and long-term. There are sufficient funds in that for the twenty fifteen budget to take care of this ninety-day premium on the annualized basis. And so the thirty-two six fifty is in that reserve fund based on projected hirings and things we think will be okay. Or that will be okay. So it is, it is directed, it is accommodated in your in proposed twenty fifteen budget.
It's also the kind of the benefit that would uh make people try to stay longer than five years.
Exactly. Uh so is that something we want them to pursue as is, or do we want to?
I I think I think Shannon, let's look at the the other element of how the short term fits with the various various options of what way the state goes or anybody else. But I think we should go ahead with the long term uh as it is, at ninety days.
You wanna make a motion to such?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That's done. Okay, we'll look into the short term.
Right, and we'll have the short term with the follow-up to partner up with that.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, with with what we have, uh quickly, is there any question on the information items or committee reports? On the calendar, any problem with the public hearing for VDOT on the twenty-second and also the um
Rescheduling the.
scheduling the public hearing for the rezoning and SUP?
We, no, we do, we need it, we need a motion though for those, don't we?
Yes, I just make a motion to reschedule the uh rezoning this SUP to your, I'm sorry, uh.
We have it recommended, ask, please.
What what's the meeting date?
Um, I'm sorry, April eighth, if it happens first available.
I'll make the motion that we reschedule the um rezoning for April the eighth and then um schedule the public hearing for the VDOT secondary plan as suggested by staff for April twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh with that, we need to go over there to the Employment Commission for our dinner. So we'll come back into closed session when we return. Okay?
All right.
All right, we are recessed. At this time, we have two public hearings scheduled. So for the first one, proposed amendments to Article one and four of the Orange County zoning ordinance, would you like to come speak, sir?
Good fun, I'll start.
Gonna be overwhelmed by the large crowd.
Yeah, I'll keep it down back there, thank you. Um, okay, we have two uh text amendments uh for you tonight. Um the first is commercial kitchen and smokehouse. We've discussed this in the past. It was um heard by the Planning Commission, actually both these items were at the February twentieth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Uh commercial kitchen and smokehouse, that did garner a fair amount of discussion by one member. Uh staff supported it and the Planning Commission uh recommended it with a vote of four to one. No changes. Second public hearing item was the zoning ordinance amendment to allow a pricing signs, uh fuel signs for gas stations. And that received the vote, a positive recommendation of a vote of five to zero. There's no public comment at the hearings.
Okay.
So let's look at this definition. Does that mean somebody can open up a hundred thousand square foot uh building and uh and hire two hundred employees as a uh commercial kitchen?
In the worst case, well, if you consider worst worst-case scenario, but the way our def- our ordinance reads now or the lack of what it reads now, it would be entirely possible.
It would be, it would be possible.
So long as it's being prepared for their operations, their own restaurants. Arby's could open a hu- a hundred thousand square feet if they're processing food to sell in Arby's.
Yeah, and for outside.
But you couldn't have a food processing company that's selling to third parties.
Sounds to me like that kind of stuff ought to go in a commercial commercially zoned area.
Okay.
I can understand that you're trying to, you're trying to do something for your own local thing, but what you're saying is you want an Arby's food processor here could basically uh set up in an agriculture by right.
Well, at at least they would satisfy this part. I mean, they have other things they have to say, but they would satisfy this definition.
Okay. And there's nothing else that would limit them, is there? Other than height of the building and a few other things?
Just as long as they follow this the general language about just for off-site purposes, no, I mean, no onsite sales and theoretically they could.
That's true. If I, I usually don't ask you a question here. An example, when I read this earlier, includes, that's inclusive things. But are you also saying like, so an example, like will come to the scale here, it's all about scale, right?
Right.
So if the tennis commercial kitchen or smokehouse to be a small-scale operation, would the word like instead of include be a little bit better example? Or is that, County Attorney, is that doing anything similar to?
Well, I think the controlling language is the commercial kitchen language. I think that include a smokehouse was just to clarify that a smokehouse would be classified as a commercial kitchen.
I'm sorry, I meant that the example includes up preparing and storing food for catering services. So that that gives you the the scale of what you're trying to achieve.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be, that that wouldn't be binding. The example wouldn't be binding on us.
But that's kind of the intent, is that that's a size operation.
Yes, that's exactly right.
And that's one of the things the Planning Commission debated for a very long time, is do you put some employee limitations, do you put some size limitations? But then the discussion was, do we want to go be counting your employees or checking your size?
Well, and and I I'm not sure how you would do it. I'm just saying that the way you've got it here is the the barn door is totally open.
It is, and that is a worst best-case scenario because then that is generating revenues.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
On large scale for the county.
Understand, and and we don't care where we do it.
Okay, this is my favorite line. So do whorehouses and um um casinos, and and I'm down with that. I'm, you know, hey, I'm down with it, you know, let's open up some strip clubs and that's great, and let's put them right in the middle of Lake of the Woods because that's appropriate. And I'm being facetious, of course. You know, and 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 the thing of all this is, I'm not, I'm not, I'm down with you, but this whole anything, anytime, anywhere, no matter what, isn't always, it it appears to be great, but it's not always great. And and I'm down with this tonight. I think it's a great idea because I know why we're doing it. But yet again, the conversation we had out there in the hallway, we are changing our zoning ordinance to fit one particular person. Again, fine, because we've got some crazy stuff in our zoning ordinance that needs to be corrected. But at the same time, Lee's got a very valid point. You say, okay, Arby's can come in here, but when you don't regulate Arby's coming in here, you end up with what Teal's got in his district, complaints about all the tractor-trailers that are going up and down a road that isn't made to have tractor-trailers going up and down it. I I'm just saying sometimes, you know.
Which road is that?
Well, Don- by Donald Brooks. I mean, they complain about the tractor-trailers going up and down the road all the time.
Well, I I know, but they forget the fact that the road was widened and and redone so the tractor-trailers could go.
But I'm just saying, they they com- they complain about the tractor-trailers going through a residential area. Um, you know, I've got one of those right now that y'all did the thing the other day, tractor-trailers going through the middle of a residential area. I I'm I'm just simply saying you need to be very careful because one day, today, today we know what we intend.
For this one.
For this one. But to ten years from now, when none of us are sitting up here, do we, does?
Doesn't make any difference, it's gonna happen six weeks from now.
Well, one possibility, which you wouldn't have, I mean, it's pretty easy to track as a square footage maximum. Because, you know, when they apply for a building permit, that's, you know, we don't need to go count your employees or check your dollars, sales, we could use the square footage, which is.
That that would, that seems to me to be a reasonable, I mean, obviously, uh if you've got a family operation, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's that's the kind of stuff that we do all over the county.
Oh, but guess what? If this was a family operation, they could do it by right if they were living on the um, if they were living there. And the family just worked there because then it would be a an at-home business that we allow. The problem with this one is the people aren't gonna live where it was going to be done.
I think the square footage would be a very good, very good solution, which.
I I think that's great. I think that's a great.
Didn't come up at the Planning Commission.
I mean, I think that that sounds to me like a reasonable limitation that keeps it of the order of the scale that we're interested. I just don't want to set ourselves up for, you know, for the kinds of uh of things that lead to trouble downstream.
Ten.
Ten. Well, recommend.
If I may, um I believe the, from what I I discussed with it with this person was, I think they have about six thousand in for their accessory structure. There's already a a farm, and so I'd recommend, you know, a limit of maybe ten thousand square feet.
I don't have a problem with that.
If that'd be acceptable with the board.
Can we do that at this stage?
After the public hearing.
Okay.
Teal, I think is your warehouse.
Twenty. That's not that big.
No, I mean, at.
Does ten do anything with an accessory structure or any of the geometrics?
No, sir.
Now, is that ten total, or is that ten under one roof?
That would be up to you. I'm just throwing throwing a number out for you all because you think about, you know, they may, it's very doubtful they have a smokehouse in the same area where they're doing their catering preparation. So I would think it'd be in total.
Associated with the food preparation or the smokehouse or whatever.
And I certainly.
And I'm, you know, if ten thousand's too restrictive, I don't have a problem. I'm just worried about the guy that's got, you know, eight eight semi semis coming in every day and going back out every day.
You don't want wampless food.
Yeah.
Right. And that's.
I mean, Boston Market.
Right.
Yeah. And I would love to have Boston Market down here, but let's put it in an area that that, you know, that we're planning for commercial. And uh as opposed to just letting it go anywhere in the county.
Yeah, I'm just, I I'm, I'm not sure ten is a good number because I I'm, this is really a type of agriculture.
That's what, that's what I was going to say.
There's lots of agricultural structures around that are, that are, you know, I know of a few.
Well, we're talking food preparation here. If we say this is the commercial kitchen and we say that's twenty thousand square foot limited on a on a commercial kitchen or whatever.
Twenty thousand square foot kitchen is a big damn kitchen considering my kitchen's about twelve by twelve. So I'm just saying.
Well, I don't have a problem. I mean, ten thousand sounds like a reasonable number, but but if there's, there's a.
It's a hundred forty-four square feet.
And if you had a much larger building, you could still, you could say, okay, you can use ten thousand square feet of that building. That doesn't prevent you from using a larger structure.
Sure.
It only prevents you from using more than X square feet of that larger structure.
Okay. So you say, uh, uh, is a ter- a ten thousand square foot operation which prepares or stores food, including smokehouses?
Not to exceed.
May, may success, may suggest means an operation utilizing ten thousand square feet or less.
Yeah. Whatever you, you you'd have better put the words in there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's that was really what would, as I remember the Planning Commission having early discussions about this, that was sort of the.
Is, was that their problem to hang up over?
Well, they they didn't find a good way of defining it or limiting it.
Limiting.
Because they talked about number of employees and and they actually talked about square footage and sales and, I mean, it went all over the place, and nothing seemed to really.
Square footage is the easiest one to manage. Anything else requires uh him to go out and count employees or go sit out there in the parking lot with this little quick, it's a Greg, run and hide.
Yeah, Shannon will go on that mission.
I would, I would say, we just, we need to make sure that that we take care of the situation. It's possible that they could be locating this in a twenty-five thousand square foot building, but only using ten.
That's fine.
For, it it needs to say that crisply because in some cases, these are gonna be in existing buildings, and we don't want to force them to tear half the building down.
Nope, nope.
Well, that's why I suggested that we're utilizing ten thousand square.
And when, and when we issue a zoning permit, you know, there's there's, we we have mechanisms in place, but then again, we only have certain mechanisms in place. And one of those is identify, is putting that condition, that restriction on the zoning permit once we issue that same.
If they go in an existing building, you're not gonna be issuing anything.
Exactly, exactly. You're not even gonna know. You're not gonna know until somebody complains and and if they're not complaining, you don't know.
Right.
So there you go.
No, I think they would have to do a youth group application. They'd have to do, if you take a barn and turn it into a kitchen, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to file with the Building Inspector's Office a youth group change.
Permit. They'd have to do a permit.
You you're definitely gonna have to go to the health department.
You're gonna have to file.
Yeah, that's right.
And us.
The health department is gonna catch you more than anybody.
And then the building department and for something like that, it'd have to come through us to get a um a zoning permit.
Okay.
If it's on land that's already agricultural?
For a commercial kitchen, yes, sir. There's.
No, you're not making it.
I mean, oh, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem with the by right.
Right, I was just asking.
We need to push people through a special youth permit.
Right, what's gonna happen is to trigger, it's probably gonna be more through the health department when the health department comes into the kitchen.
Or somebody does something that that uh makes the uh neighbors complain and they look in the zoning ordinance and say, you know, with eighteen, you know, with the two or three semis coming in every day, that probably is not a ten thousand square foot operation.
So you got a way to word it?
Yeah, here's how I put it. Commercial kitchen or smokehouse means an operation utilizing ten thousand square feet or less which prepares or stores food. So I just added in between the operation and the which, utilizing ten thousand square feet or less.
Okay. Well, at this point in time, having discussed it, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. And then if we have discussion, we can discuss. If not, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
With the amendment that I recommended.
With the amendment, as.
With the amendments, as recommended.
Yes.
That's my amended second.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mrs. DeH?
Aye.
Mr. Brain?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye. Okay. Uh, second public hearing.
This, this would be.
You've already, you've already discussed it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Close public hearing. Any discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion. Okay.
Yes, I do have so. The reason being, having run commercial businesses before and riding throughout Orange County, I would say ninety percent of the businesses in Orange County are in violation of our digital sign ordinance. Which I do not have a problem with because most of the digital signs are small and in a window, and they are telling about specials or whatever else. I have no problem with the ordinance as written, but I believe in the future, we're going to have to amend this ordinance to accommodate the technology world.
Window signs.
We talked about that, I don't think. Remember we talked about that when we did this? How did we differentiate with that?
These are monument or pylon signs.
That's right. That's, we're all, we're not, because we're not talking about the ones that are in the window.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
And I don't think we have any constraints on the ones in the window.
Right.
Okay, well, even with the monument or pylon signs, I think down the road,
No, we don't, we don't want them.
this is going to have to be amended again because it says per development. Well, if you do a town center, that's one development. You can have one digital sign unless you're selling gasoline, and then you can have a price sign. I believe that that is too restrictive on a large development, which we may or may not have.
Uh, he's something we're working on?
Yes. So I I just, I want it to go on record that I will truly believe that in the near, not the distant future, we're going to have to redo our digital sign ordinance to accommodate.
We may, we talked not just the digital sign, but all signs. If we start looking, if we start looking at what we might do on Route three, I suspect Route three will have its own zoning classification and and a bunch of other things.
Right, but even just in the world as general, it is going the way of technology. And people want to get away from traditional signage and everything else. So I support this for the current time. But I do want to make note that we will probably be revisiting it in a very short time period. This is pretty much all I've, uh, if business does like the technology.
And and I, as you know, I've had concern with the definition of development that we're using, and that because of that definition is likely to force exactly what you're talking about.
Right, and if you take individual businesses that are built individually, you can have ten digital signs within a hundred feet of each other. You take a development that is developed by one individual and have fifty businesses, and you can have one digital sign. So.
That's what the definition now says of the word. That's what the definition now said of the word development.
Exactly. So I, I really believe that we are going to be revisiting this in the very near future.
But I, I.
Looks like you've got work to do, man.
Yeah, this, the way I see this, this solves one very specific piece of the issue. It's a, it's a, it's one small step at a time. Which is probably okay, but I, I agree with your overall concern.
It addresses a violation that we all understand is not a problem.
Right.
So.
Mul- multiples.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Now that I look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mrs. Hens?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, at this point in time then, let's go into closed meeting.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One matter concerning discussion of personnel which concerns a specific employee in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A one and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of the enforcited matters in closed meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And I'm still the youngest one, next to Allison sitting up here.
Ready?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Need roll call.
Mrs. Hens?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye.
There's one caveat. It said happy birthday to Jim. Yes, that's an open session.
But they didn't sing.
No, we were, we were careful, uh.
No singing.
However, that would've been better enclosed rather than out here in the public.
For which the public thanks.
Too strong.
All right, uh, well, at this point in time, we are through the regular agenda except for a budget work session. Correct? There's nothing left to do until we pull it all out before we left. Yep.
I'm just gonna pull up the budget balancer here and, um, yeah, Allison has a handout.
The budget balance.
Huh?
It's gone.
It's outside. It's right outside.
I'll bring it in. Do you can?
Forget it.
I can, I can do without it. Besides, Brenda's gonna hurry it quickly anyway.
Uh, while she's doing that, I'm handing out, uh, Brenda's got a, a minor amendment, uh, adjustment to the budget document.
Um, when I, after the presentation, um, on the twenty-seventh, when I went back and started, um, working up my numbers for the ad, I realized that I had not updated a couple of numbers in this Excel spreadsheet for the consolidated budget. And it affected some of the percentage changes, um, on just a few of the slides. But I wanted you all to have the, the, um, you know, the corrected version. I think in the, um, presentation, the, the first places that, um, any of this appears is like slide sixteen and seventeen. But the bottom one is that, um, the general fund, nothing in the general fund changes. Um, I did, the biggest adjustment is in the social services fund. And, um, we were waiting to hear back from the social services staff about some final numbers. And I just forgot to go back and, um, edit that number. So that's a change. All the highlighted numbers are the ones that have been affected in some way. But it doesn't affect the, um, proposed tax rate or any of the local funding. It's just in the consolidated overall view. So the total consolidated budget, um, instead of being an increase of like six point five, it went to six point eight six. And I'm sorry.
And to let you all know, I would've beat her about the head, but she'd already done it to herself quite thoroughly. Like I said, the number at the bottom didn't change. This is.
So with that, uh, we're at a point now that we're certainly, um, available to make any adjustments to the pro- budget. Uh, you have either tonight or Thursday, you have scheduled work session Thursday. But, uh, the ad has to be sent to the newspaper by Friday to be able to meet the, uh, advertising schedule for a public hearing on, uh, April first. Correct? Public hearing. And as you all know, that's not a meeting you, you just receive public info, take no action and reconvene the following week.
Jim?
Well, these are my old notes, I think.
I'm just reviewing. I know, but you were revisiting. I just wanted to.
Well, if nobody's wanted to say anything, I would move that we announce the eight point four percent, uh, the eight point four cent. Uh, real estate tax rate increase and the budget as presented, the budget and CIP as presented.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
I move that we cancel the work session on Thursday.
Second.
I don't think there's need for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.